I'm gonna call the meeting. The Freetown Zone Board of Appeals to order. Let the record reflect all members here. I will... What do we got first? We got, alright, we got Velozar on, on, on the, uh, on the agenda first tonight. And we will... What's that?
Well, I'll make a motion, we open the public here.
Uh, actually, you want me to make that motion?
Well, I'm gonna do it after.
Okay. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nick would, um...
I'm gonna refuse myself on this one.
Nick, Nick Velozar like to accuse himself from this meeting tonight. So this, uh, Velozar here. And, uh, Mr. Swede will step in and be our third member. So, Mr. Jerry, come on, come on aboard and show us what you would like to do.
4:43. If I stand back, you mind if I take this off? This is existing, existing. See, you want this.
Those are all the, uh...
You want the, uh, paper ad, or you, they sent it to you also? The ad that was in the paper?
Yeah.
Just the old one?
I don't think we need the ad.
I don't think we need the ad, but that's fine.
I know you're trying to get me out of here and say no, so I just wanted to cover all bases. Okay, uh, existing structure. Uh, dilapidated house has been, um, been empty for about five or six years. It, uh, structurally, I have a letter saying it's basically unsound. It has water damage, structural damage. Actually, I killed a rat there today. It's in my truck, if you want me to bring that in for evidence. So I wanted to take this house down, uh, this structure right here. As you can see, it's, um, a foot and a half from the property line. Mr. LaRanger is here tonight. Uh, you see the dimensions. And I wanna replace it with a, uh, a larger structure. And a two-car garage. Basically, this structure is ten feet longer and less than a foot wider. That's with the, uh, house and garage. Um, it makes the, um, setbacks better on all sides except the side that abuts me, which, um... Where are we here? This is my property.
Danny's here, you're here.
Okay, right here. So it changes, the only one it lessens the setback on is my side.
The ninth side.
Right, goes to about, goes to five. Danny's, here goes to, from one five, I believe, to five.
So you're kinda centering them all up?
Right, exactly.
What'd you say, widthwise, it was just a foot?
It's less than a foot wider.
A lot wider than the old house?
Than the old house, but it's probably ten feet longer. With the garage, uh, the new structure. Um, one of the things I wanna do is elevate it because the soil is so poor, there's always water in the cellar. Um, it's also has a pump-up system. So, again, elevation will get me, so I can direct feed gravity. Uh, we have public water on the site, so we're not worried about, um, wells and things like that. It's an area of, uh, small summer cottages, so basically, all the houses around it. Uh, setback, less than that property is in undersized lots. And basically, that's, that's it. It's, uh, like I say, just wanna improve it, center it on a lot. It'll meet the, uh, the front setbacks are easy to meet. It's just basically the side and rear.
Yeah, real long lot.
So you're just here for the side, the setbacks?
Basically, yes.
Your side setbacks?
Uh, as side and rear.
Rear, cause you're under twenty, I see.
Right, and the side.
And you're not doing anything with the garage, right?
That garage is actually on another property.
So the freight property, okay, so that's the property line there?
That's a property line. My garage, the garage with this property is right here. That's the neighbor's garage.
That's the neighbor's garage.
As you can see, that's, I don't think it's just, but pretty close to the property line.
Yeah, it looks like she got eight feet. That's not, that's something else.
Your reasoning is actually, it, um, the soil is a problem, it's very wet.
Why did Jeff, the, why did the building inspector? Did he go, did you went for building permit, I'm taking it?
Absolutely, Mr. Nye, setbacks.
Because of the setback, but it's pre-existing?
I wouldn't have had to go off, come to you folks if I built it in the same footprint. But once I wanted to move it over and center it on the lot, I had to, uh, basically come to you folks and get the okay. It can be, it can go, it can go back in the same footprint.
Yeah.
I mean, I have a letter from an engineering company, if you wanna see it. It says the structure and sound, it's up to you.
Whatever you want, like to submit for the record? Makes sense if you have copies or anything you wanna submit for the record? That makes cop, that makes sense.
That's not an original, is it?
Uh, I have two originals.
Okay.
Alright, I don't have any other questions. You got any, any other questions? Okay, uh, Swede, Swede, you got any questions? Okay, I'll open, I'll open up the floor if anybody would like to, uh, anybody here that this, this hearing would like to speak?
That house has been ISO for years.
Danny, just a name and address.
Well, I'm sorry, Dan LaRanger, 257, uh, Middleborough Road.
You know how this, where she sat here.
South border. Uh, that house has been ISO for years. Velozar's properties are always maintained. My wife and I can't wait to get rid of that house. So, we're a yes.
Anybody else from, uh...
We're not from that.
Okay, great, okay, good. You guys are all set? Yeah, I'm all set. I'll make a motion to close...
If you say no, I'll say more.
What's that?
If you say yes, I'll get out of here.
I have no other questions.
I have no other questions. I have no questions.
I'll make a motion to close the, this portion of the public hearing.
The motion to close this portion of the public hearing, Velozar has been...
Second. For the record, it's actually owned by a company called Twin Boys. I'm just a manager of it, just so I say.
The Twin Boys, Alice.
Twin Boys, yes.
Twin Boys, Alice.
Twin Boys, Alice. Motion's been made, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Do you have any discussion?
No, I personally don't see, I see it as an improvement for the neighborhood. Setbacks for, uh, being improved a little bit.
Yeah, he is, he is blessing his non-conformity on this side, which is nice to see. He's taken from the other side a little bit, but he's, he's the butter on the other side anyhow, so...
Right, right.
The setback, rear setback doesn't look like it's changing.
It changes the house, what?
She got three, three point two over here.
It's actually going to three point five, so you're actually increasing a little bit. So... If nobody has any questions, uh, you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, I too am familiar with this area, uh, for many years. And I will attest that, uh, what Mr. LaRanger's saying and, and what, uh, Mr. Velozar's saying are representation of the company that is dilapidated. And what he is doing here is going to, uh, increase the setbacks as he's indicated.
So I'll make a motion that we grant the variance for... Uh, what are we putting this under, Jerry?
Twin Boys.
Twin Boys, Alice.
259...
259 Middleborough Road, um, as shown on the plan, um, with an as-built to follow. That's normal anyhow.
Motion's been made to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's been made, granted.
Keep these, you guys want these for record?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You know, you know the drill, right?
Twenty-one days, twenty-one days. Good night.
Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. For the, um, Zero Braley Road and Costa Drive. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, so you guys can come on up, wanna present your case to us?
How you guys doing?
Good, are you?
Good, uh, my name's Dale Knapp. I'm the priman consultant. I'm supporting Ironwood on this. This is Ian Jukes, our civil engineer. This is Hamilton Carrier with Ironwood. So, um, maybe Ian, you wanna kinda present the concept and then we can deal with questions?
Do you have your green cards?
The, uh, butters?
Certified mail?
Yeah.
I sent...
Do we send it, we get...
Is everything, uh...
We've sent them, I sent them via USPS. I have digital copies.
Do you have, do you have?
I haven't sent you via email.
Okay.
The post office is in there as well.
I think they actually don't let you, you don't have to, you can do it that way now, so, alright.
Digital works?
Yeah.
So, what's going on in this property right now? Zero Costa Drive's this piece. The Costas, uh, Anthony Costa owned all this and then subdivided little bits over the years. So we wanna take the front piece and put part of the solar farm and go across the railroad. Put the remainder of it back there. We figured that's a good use for that piece of land, cause it really is not a reasonable way to get there other than this grade crossing that they've got.
I mean, we're here for the, the...
For zoning.
For the frontage.
Yep.
You know, not so much the whole, I wanna see, that's my main thing, is I wanna see the, the frontage and how you guys...
That's the project we wanted to do.
Yep.
Um, we need to prove frontage and...
That's what I wanna see. I had some time reading on line, what, what you sent to us.
Yeah, so this was the, what the Costas did the last time they subdivided. They created this lot D1, this is back in 2005. And so we have the frontage here, the remainder of this, that length on the curve plus that. Which is, I think it's, it's a little above 175, I believe. And then, at that point in time, so this became an existing lot. That they retained and they sold off that lot 2005, with its 175 feet frontage.
Now Jeff in his, um, letter talked about the easement for the railroad.
Yes.
That came through the property.
Yeah, that's back here.
That's back here.
Right, and that, sort of that ties into the other piece there, so that's kinda why you need to see them both. Cause this is the, right, you know, they've, this grade crossing's been there, I guess, for a long time. So we talked to the railroad, we actually have a license in place to put utilities under that and they're controlled access.
Do you have the other lot, any plans placed or no?
For this? No, I don't believe we have a survey of that lot. Yeah. Does the Costas have a survey of that lot?
I don't believe so. They don't, they did a survey on this part.
So, I mean, this lot, obviously, it's only frontage is on the railroad. Right? So we would be asking for, I guess, a special permit to use this lot and the other lot. And just to have the facility span both lots.
But right now, there's two separate lots for every lot.
That's correct.
So D1, you got 175?
D1 is somebody else's lot, right?
Yeah, that's the one that they talked about.
So this is the one they had that 175 feet, there's the hundred-foot circle, not hitting any...
You don't need to come in front of us for this though, this is a by right use, correct?
Yeah, correct, that's a pre-existing lot.
Pre-existing lot, you have the frontage, you have the square footage, it's residential. Last time I know, solar was allowed in residential. You have, you're just gonna have a buffer zone, right now it's fifty-foot buffer zone, so none of that matters for this lot. This lot here is why you're in front of us? You're in front of us for...
The response was that we didn't have the required 150 on lot D2.
Yeah.
That's where we appealed.
You, 150...
Well, let's, let's read, uh, Jeffrey's letter. So this office has determined that these properties do not meet the required frontage he was talking about.
Back.
The two, the two properties.
Right.
D1, D2.
Zero, zero Braley Road and zero Costa Road. Um, do not meet the required frontage 175 feet by the zoning laws. To construct on this lot, these are both non-billable lots. Um, Article 11.3A.
So what map and parcel is D2?
That is the Zero Costa Drive, 241-53.
And 247-6 is...
Is this one. So, I guess...
So this lot is D2, correct?
Yes, sir.
This lot here is D2.
Right.
And this says total frontage is 195.45 feet.
Which is the sum of the curving and...
Right, although, I got, I got, yeah.
Yeah.
I got all that. But he's saying there's not enough frontage on this lot.
Correct. That's what the letter says.
That's what the letter says, yeah.
That's what the letter said, because he said because you can't use...
You're not trying to use...
An easement as part of your frontage.
You absolutely cannot.
Yes, but that's not, that's not part of here.
Correct, so why is D2...
It's an approved road, but it's not a town-accepted road.
Okay.
I don't think, that, that doesn't matter.
That doesn't matter.
Absolutely not.
I mean, it is a pre-existing lot, right, D2?
It appears to be a pre-existing, you're not trying to create D2, are you?
No, we're not.
This is, this is here.
Yes, it says 2005, that's the only lot.
And Costa Drive was recorded with the town, you went through, whoa, you got frontage.
No, no, this was 2005, I think.
Yeah, well, you have frontage for this lot, so...
Bob Raymond.
Yeah.
I think that's on my side. So I don't get this, D2.
I do get the other one.
I do get the other one, cause I don't see any frontage for the other one.
Right.
The other one's land lot.
Right. But... Okay. We're here to appeal his decision.
You're appealing...
On D2.
On D2? Are you appealing on both, or are you appealing on this?
We're seeking approval for both.
For D1 and D2?
Uh, for D2, D1's not theirs.
Yeah, yeah, D2, I'm sorry, D2.
What's that lot?
We can only assert that lot D2 has the right...
We can't give you something that's not... You can't ask for variance for something that's not, doesn't require a variance. So it's not like they can give you a variance on something that's a pre-existing grant, uh...
Right.
Right to use.
Yep. So, I guess that's what I'm trying to say, the, the, and the, we are definitely asking for a bearing, or a determination the lot D2 complies.
Um, the zoning enforcement officer is the, is the, the person you would get the zoning determination from. This, obviously, if you wanna do something that's a landlocked piece, you would need a variance for it. And it's a frontage variance. You have plenty of land. He hasn't got enough wetland, he's just, he said it was frontage, like, man, I got it.
I don't see the upland and all that.
Uh, actually Dale can tell you.
It's not doing anything on here, it is on here.
Yeah, it is.
Dale actually knows where it is.
It's on the other side, yeah.
It's here.
It's on both sides.
But his calculations show he's got... And his denial was frontage.
His denial was frontage. That's all it was, so I, this doesn't matter about...
Doesn't matter about the old ones anyway. Alright, so that's confused.
So if the wetlands are... Well, you got the guy delineating the wetlands recently right here, so...
Yeah, you can see him here, you can see him here, you can see him here.
I get that.
We got the wet.
So we're here for frontage only.
Frontage only.
And I see... I see no problem with D2.
I don't even.
Or Zero Costa Drive, 241-53, I do see a problem with 247 parcel 6, so...
Right. And there's no, there's no, there's no spite strip there or anything, right, that I can't see?
I don't think so.
It meets everything.
Easement area, what's this easement area? What's it, what you referring to? Is there something here that we went out seeing that blocks it all?
Twenty-foot slope easement.
It's just an easement though, isn't it?
I do have the deed, there's something in there. Copy that, here we go.
Right.
It says the easement area, but that doesn't necessarily mean that. This could be talking about, this is just a note.
Uh, is that for this? That's, this is how many...
I don't know what he's saying.
Well, there was a whole bunch of them before they came in 2005. He was civil engineer, right? Could you explain the easements? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the civil engineer.
Oh, sorry about that.
The easements on their plan, I...
Are you...
I can go get you an explanation, I know everything that they've done on this. The easement line, it could be utility easements, there's all kinds of things that could be...
But that doesn't preclude frontage, unless that, somebody else owned that. It wouldn't preclude frontage, an easement doesn't... Correct.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I saw the deed for D1, I didn't see it for D2.
But D2 is the retained parcel. Right, so I don't think there was a deed for it. It was the deed, uh, right, Anthony Costa got the whole thing.
You're gonna put solar panels on D2? Is that the idea?
Yes.
Putting solar, a small section of solar on that because of the wetland area?
Correct.
Right.
And then, you plan on doing this?
And then the landlocked parcel is sort of the larger target?
Alright. Well, make your presentation at least on the landlocked parcel, what you're doing, what your, your... Plan is to do with that.
Sure. So, um, you wanna kinda talk through what's been done with MBTA to date? I can touch on resources as necessary.
Can everybody hear me okay?
I think so.
Come, come stand with me if you're ready. Try to socially distance, please.
Yeah. Standing, not gonna rain hopefully for a little bit.
An easement would've been nice, that's alright.
So the difficulty in getting this parcel, obviously, is you gotta get across the railroad. There's a grade crossing here that, for this parcel already. We've worked with the MBTA, and we've got a underground, uh, sleeve going in to get the power across. And then, you know, hopefully, you know, it's just gated, you know, you're very, very infrequently gonna have people back here. I mean, you're gonna mow it twice a year and whenever there's, a technician has a problem, has to get back and service the equipment. But other than that, it should be a, a use that has almost no traffic across the railroad, which is, the railroad seems to be in favor of.
And unlike a subdivision which was proposed before, sort of no drain-on services, no hardscape equipment. And we brought this, and I know you guys have solar projects already here in Freetown, but we thought it might be helpful to kinda show an example. You know, it's gonna be an ag fence surrounding it, wooden posts, you know, sort of driven piles, fairly low impact of the meadow maintained underneath it. So, certainly not a hardscape kind of industrial development or, or use.
And you know this board only gives you a variance, it does not give, does not make you, so you don't have to go in front of the planning board for, uh...
This is...
Site plan review.
Very early stage.
Yeah, this is your, just the administrative appeal for now.
Can you guys all understand that too? This is the administrative appeal just for the frontage of the denial that the building inspector said he didn't have 175. There will be a whole new process that'll go in front of the planning board. And it talked about again, that we'll go through.
They'll have to do stormwater management, they'll have to do, to see where the rainwater's gonna go. They can't add to, or take away any stormwater. So if, they, so they can't clear cut the whole site and dump all their stormwater into your wetlands, they can't do any of that. That's all by, through state law. So the state requires them to do certain things. They'll submit an application, the town will have a, paid by them, will have an engineer that's ours review their engineer's work. And oversee everything, make sure that, you know, what their calculations all work out to be will be the actual calculations. And they'll come up, they'll come up to a consensus on what's right and what's wrong. So they can't add anything here or take them any, anything. They can't dry out this land and they can't add to, add more water to it.
Okay, so explain to me...
But that's all through the planning board.
Okay, explain to me on the plot plan. You need to talk about footage. Oh, Robert Eng.
Yeah, we'll, we'll open it up to you guys in a few seconds. I just wanted to make sure you guys understood what we're...
We were just trying to explain the process, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Alright. Are you all set? Are you any, what do we, we left off here?
More presentations, that pretty much, and you good?
Yeah, any further, it's really the stuff that we did.
Mm-hmm.
Examine the detail of the thing.
Sure, and as you referenced, there's a lot more to this, uh, process.
I should understand why Jeff, uh, thought that way, but...
I don't know that.
I don't know why.
Yes, I understand that, I don't.
Yes, yes.
The numbers are right, you know.
Right.
You can add it up real quick in your head in your motorhome or something.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep.
I don't have any other questions for them.
You guys good?
The only questions I have, and I think we've already covered it, but I just wanna be clear. In your request, you explained that you have information that supports the 175. Are we only speaking of the D2 lot?
Correct. No, we, we do not have information that shows from, for the other lot.
Seeking a waiver.
We would be seeking a waiver.
Definitely. I think it was, the, the letter came back with sort of both, so it was kinda tough to appeal the one that... Correct, I understand. The one is yes, one is no. I don't have any more questions.
I have no questions.
I'm good.
I want to, Dave, you want, you guys wanna close the public hearing?
No, I'd hear from them.
Oh, sorry. Alright, guys, so this is, I'm sorry. This is, uh, we have a meeting like once a year at the ZBA, so sometimes it get a little fuzzy on our formalities. Um, if you guys would like to speak, uh, give your name, address, address the board and we'll answer, hopefully, they'll answer all your questions.
Alright, I, my first question, I'm Robert Eng from Four Costa Drive. I actually have two questions. One, what frontage, what frontage are you talking about? On Costa Drive itself? There was 175 feet, right? There is 175 feet.
Correct. Over 175.
It's actually a little bigger.
195. Now what about the back lot that has absolutely no frontage? You using the frontage on Costa Drive to access, to say that it's okay to use the back lot?
We would have to ask for...
Asking for a waiver.
Sorry, am I allowed to answer that?
Oh, through the chair, yes.
Sorry, um, we would be asking for a waiver for any use on that lot.
Okay, and then what about the easements that go through, uh, the Four Costa Drive and the Braley Road address? I don't know what Tony's old address is there. Cause that's my backyard.
So you are lot B, uh, yeah, and right here, I see where you are.
Yeah, see in the back of that? It goes right down?
Goes right through here and goes here.
Right.
The project as proposed, does not utilize that easement until you get to this piece. Maybe it's helpful to see there's access here.
Until, we're...
So you, you're proposing to change the easement from here, that's currently runs back to your property? Off the circle where you already have frontage? And then staying on your own property, which is D2 lot?
Correct.
And then accessing the backland?
Exactly.
So you're going to give up the access that you have here?
Um, oh, if we, if we decided that, Costa, make sure we could.
Yeah.
We have no reason to use it, right?
Well, well, I'd like to have some kind of guarantee that if this, this goes the way you have it on paper, that you will, uh, relieve that easement? So that I don't have to worry about people driving through there again.
Okay.
Yeah, we can...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we're here for that.
Yeah, we're not here for that. That's, that will be, that'll be the next step, once you get to the planning board.
Okay. So I'll have to go to that meeting too.
Yeah, that one, when they get all the rest of the documents.
We can talk after meeting.
After meeting, well, you guys reach out and try to...
Yep, that's great, hard.
I'll take a cost, multiple meetings in nights, we'll... I'm sure it will, yeah. So, Larry Rose, Three Costa Drive.
Three Costa.
Now, off of the cul-de-sac, the frontage is, uh, 175, thereabouts, so a little bit more.
195.
195 is what they're showing.
That's 195.
195, D that lot. Where's the proposed, um, solar panels on the stop?
Back in here, closer to the tracks, you can see it here. So this is the cul-de-sac. So there's a, I don't know, what's that distance you think Ian?
There's a scale over here.
Several hundred feet.
So that's, uh...
Five hundred?
Two hundred, uh, actually from the cul-de-sac, yeah, it's 300 feet there, so 300, maybe 450 feet.
So the access to get to there, what's that one look like? From the cul-de-sac?
Don't forget, these are all their proposals?
Right.
When it gets in front of the planning board?
It could totally different.
That could change things, the planning board could require certain things. You know, they could change their plan too.
Right, so what do you have in mind right now?
Right now, we're coming up the very end of the cul-de-sac, a little bit to the left.
Just a driveway or...
Just a driveway.
Yep, it's very, sort of a, same kinda infrastructure you'd put in to build a home. Some, maybe some wooden poles, just like you have for a power drop.
Wetlands, uh...
Yep.
On either side of it.
We've mapped them all.
Typically, again, this is not this board. Typically, the planning board has required... Typically, the planning board has required screenings, plant, vegetative screenings. Um, but that, again, that's all the planning board stuff. But normally, that's, there's a 50-foot buffer they can't touch all the way around the property. Get bombed. Fifty-foot all the way around property, there'll be fencing, that's required. And then normally, the planning board requires a, a hedge-like screening, like a abreviate, or something that's de-resistance. Which you guys, I'm sure, are aware of. Again, not this board.
Right, right.
You guys will, you guys will have plenty of bikes at the apple when, when that, uh, when those meetings start up.
If it gets to that point.
Absolutely.
When it...
Win and if, they don't get win and if.
Yeah, one more question, is this, uh, a long-term lease or is this a purchase?
It's a purchase, sir.
Any question?
I've been working with Michael since, uh, about eighteen months ago, so...
And these plans are very preliminary, they're not very detailed as well, you know, at this stage of the game. So it's just trying to deal with the administrative appeal, which was the denial of the, that they had the 175-foot frontage. If they get that, they'll go to step two, which is maybe develop more plans, you know, get ready with solar to, uh, submit to the town.
I have a question. Joe Bossy, Six Costa Drive. Is the road gonna be negotiable? Because you're actually accessing it and hugging my back, a budding property along the whole way on your proposed road as of now.
Bossy, yep.
So it's right here?
Correct, I'm sorry, I don't wanna, let me go on.
Um, Bossy.
I'm at, I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac, so if you've been, yeah, so if you've been at the pro, if you've been on the property, this is my lot. So your proposed road, if you wanna call it a driveway or whatever, is gonna go into the woods, I assume? And then take a right and you follow my property line all along here. I realize this isn't the right meeting, but is there any particular reason why you didn't just go through the wetlands and replicate them elsewhere?
We're forced to minimize the wetland impacts.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so if we went this way, this is the only other way to go, and, oh, you're going over the stream too.
Yeah, there's, there's a stream in there.
There is, there's a...
It's more, it's more of a permitting lift.
Right, there's, there's a stream back here. Right, there's, there's a stream back here.
Yes. Right, and that's delineated right there.
Right, right, I was just concerned with, I'm not opposed to this, because I realize that the land can't really be used for anything else. My concern is, why don't you just go straight back, because I'm not keen on the idea of you guys having trucks going back and forth and following my property line. It would be.
Yeah.
A lot easier and less impact for me if it just went straight across.
Sure.
Because obviously, the trucks are gonna be loud. And dusty. And we're gonna have to look at it, if you go through here, you're gonna wipe out, I have very little vegetation here. My property, I bought a farm, an old farm, so the only woods line that I've got is technically your property. So if you cut a road in, I'm gonna lose my woods, I'm gonna be looking at a road.
Maybe some kind of planting along here, something that, some, some kind of screen so you don't see them going across it?
I, I understand, well, we're just.
I'm asking you, is that what you're thinking?
The reason why I'm bringing it up is because we're, we're talking about fully developed adult trees, 50, 60 footers, you know what I mean? When I come home and they've cleared, and it looks completely different, and all I'm looking at is a road. And abreviate isn't, you know, it's like, here's a slice of the cake that I just took the whole thing from.
Right.
You know what I mean, there's.
We're not gonna clear anything, however, there will be a road on your side, so I don't mean to say that wouldn't be there.
Correct.
But we're not starting clearing till we get back here, trying to keep, I mean, there's another upland area here we could use, but we're trying to keep it back here.
I, I understand, I'm just looking at the scope of the project, saying, okay, you guys are dropping millions of dollars on panels, I, I don't think it's a big deal to ask if you just go straight back, that's all.
The, really, the big question is whether we can get a permit to do it or not.
Yeah.
I don't think any, any of us would, would object to, you know, bringing the road over like that or something, crossing a narrow spot.
Right, I mean, only because this is, this is nothing, this is nothing, just, to me, I would, that's the only thing that I oppose. Is, is the layout of the road is not conducive to me.
Yeah, no.
And I understand, I'm, I'm for it, I'm not against it, I have panels on my house, I know how they work, they're great. It's not a lease, I own them.
I was gonna say, I think after this meeting, there'll be some valuable time that we can interact with the board to talk about planning plans, sort of small changes to these designs, when and if we get to a point where we're proposing, you know, to the planning board, maybe we can incorporate some of your feedback to create a project that's, you know, a better neighbor. Ultimately, solar projects make great neighbors.
I'm just not, I'm just not familiar with the process, so I don't, I don't wanna say, okay, I'm not opposed, and then find out, oh, that was your opportunity to ask about the road.
Absolutely.
If, if they say, we don't deal with the road, that's fine, and I'm not opposed to it, but the road, to me, is the only issue.
When they close this hearing, give you, we can each give you a card, and we can kind of involve you guys, and share preliminary layout, incorporate your feedback.
You're also gonna be connecting to the grid from Costa Drive?
It's going right into three-phase, yep. So these are sort of smaller projects that can connect into roadside distribution, so it doesn't require large substations or electrical infrastructure. Kind of like those poles.
Yep.
Right there.
Right, and, and those, those poles are gonna go right up, I would assume, on the side of your.
Over here, on the opposite side.
Over your ride, on, on the side of your road.
Yep.
So what happens when it hits Costa Drive, you're just gonna use the top of the poles that are there, or you're gonna put in another set of poles?
What's the interconnection look like?
I think we wanted to put like one pole, right?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can give you some more plans on that from the interconnection side, this is more of a, you know.
It's outside of the scope of this, this meeting anyhow, this meeting, we're only talking about this section and frontage.
So, so let me get this straight, then this meeting is just to approve whether or not that land can be used without the frontage?
Correct.
Correct.
That's what this meeting's for, nothing else.
So if you say no, they can't use it?
They can still do, they can still develop this whole piece here next to you.
Right, right, but they.
They can put the solar panels here, they can put them.
This meeting could deem this good or no good.
This, this meeting here is only for, right now, pretty much the, the frontage, the lack of frontage in this section.
Right.
Right, but I'm not asking, I didn't see a waiver request in there, it would be another variance.
Right.
This would be.
Yeah.
Oh, would be this meeting, I thought this was just to appeal.
Administrative appeal, if there's no frontage here, but how can you, you can appeal D1, I mean, not D2. Because there is frontage there, but how do you appeal this, there's no frontage on this, there's no. So this is a, this is a variance, right?
This is, I didn't think this was a variance, I thought, I took this as only as an administrative appeal, per this application process that I saw. Because the variance, I mean, the appeal is based on both lots, so put them in a difficult position to appeal one, not the other, because the letter is both of them.
Exactly, yeah, it's a cumbersome process because of that.
So your plan, coming back in front of this board for a variance?
I'm not sure.
We would love to not have to, but I.
Not tonight.
No.
No.
No, that's what, that's what I'm explaining, right?
Right.
So we're here to decide if.
Tonight, this is actually just whether this lot has frontage, is really.
That's what they're requesting right now, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't think we can add a waiver to that, to allow that.
We may have to be back again.
Back again for variance.
Part of it, yes.
It's not us, it's general laws.
If you, well, yeah, they applied for both at once, they could, we could have done, taken care of both.
I don't know how they would have, because they have the denial because of the way Jeff put, there's no way they could use it anywhere.
Yeah, so the form of the response kind of forced us.
Unless they applied a variance at the same time as this, hoping that this passed at this meeting, but again.
Yeah. Okay.
We didn't see far enough ahead, we, we didn't envision lot D1 being kicked out.
D2.
I under, I understand, right, it's complicated, yes.
We ended up with something that you probably seen twice, and.
Understood.
We're here for a variance, we're not here for a.
No.
We're here for administrative appeal on that.
On that foot of frontage.
And there's 195-foot of frontage still.
On the front and.
Yeah, I get you, I see, yeah, that was, my mind, that's not what I was.
Okay.
I, I still don't get why we're here, to be honest with you.
I, I, I don't know. I, I really don't.
Okay.
Alright, sounds all set?
No one else has any questions?
Yep, they're all set, they just said they were good.
I'll make a motion to close the, this portion of the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, to close this portion of the public hearing, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay, guys.
So, I don't have any questions on, on this. The way that, I don't know how we write this up, because the appeal is only for one of them, so it's half of Jeff's letter. But I certainly believe that D2 has enough frontage, and would agree that, I don't know.
I don't want to, I don't want to speak to this at all. I only want to speak to.
It's in the letter though, unfortunately, so we have to appeal the decision, so we agree that zero Briley, I'm sorry, that's Briley in the back.
Yes.
Zero Briley does not have the frontage, and zero Costa does have the 175 minimum.
Yeah, lot two on that zero Costa.
D2, and I'm not sure.
I don't know what this is called.
And then subsequently, we would apply for a waiver.
A variance.
Variance, variance, yes. And there's no appeal time to this, is there, for an appeal to his decision?
You mean like 21 days?
I don't think so.
It was just a time for us to submit it.
We have a 30-day clock on the letter we received.
Correct. So that's what we're here on, the 30-day clock on this, but we're.
Right. But this is gonna close it.
This is gonna close that, we've had this meeting, so.
Well, you'll have to do a re-file.
Yep. Yes.
And then you come in, he'll kick you here for a variance.
Yeah.
For this.
Yeah.
Right.
Wanna make a motion?
I have no questions, yep. You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, to grant the administrative appeal on lot D2, which is Zero Costa Drive, shown on plan, what plan is this?
This is the approval subdivision plan.
Subdivision plan, but it should be a name, right?
Is there a number or? Nope, is there a number?
Which is.
The registry of deeds?
No, this was 2000. It's just an A and R.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Lot two, which consists of total frontage 195.45 feet with an area of 18,700.